All right, welcome everybody. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. Can we have Mr. Gervin and his students come up to talk about his woodchop bike? Come sit right next to me.
Yep.
Come on up, you can come sit over here.
Sit right here. Stay awhile.
How old?
All right.
Yeah, I was. Amazing, right?
Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
We're so excited to have you guys here.
Wow. Do you want me to start?
Yeah, let's update what's going on.
With the greenhouse?
Yes.
The greenhouse is completed. We think we started in, right after Thanksgiving? And we finished by before Christmas break. And we got it done, and what I would like to say most importantly tonight is that kids learned a lot as we did it, because it was kind of a spontaneous project, but that Butch Fisher at Island Lumber, on a whim, like literally overnight donated all the materials. Which was the cedar shingles, the trim, the, um, what else? The framing material, the plastic was all perfect. And the hoops, for the whole frame of it were all perfectly perfect. But we got the whole project completed rather quickly. And learned a lot and had a lot of fun. And Jasmine, she was a part of it. There were several other kids that were supposed to come on a last minute.
Thank you for coming Jasmine.
It was a perfect night.
Yeah, thank you. Did you have a choice?
It was a pass fail, thanks, so we... But, no, the kids learned a lot doing it. It was a lot of fun. And it was, like I said, it was quick. We jumped. And I proposed when we took it on. We kind of jumped ahead of where we were before. But we learned a lot about layout. If you want to play with that.
So what did you do Jasmine? Exactly.
Thank you.
Oh, I learned how to shingle, which was really cool. I learned how to use the chalk line to lay out the shingle nicely evenly.
Shingle courses should make see how many inches? And we learned how to add a layout for the bottom of the windows and the top of the windows. So everything came together. We framed the wall, we tied it into the steel frame. It was actually pretty, I'd never done it before either, so.
I have to add that this, we bought the hoop and the plastic, what, last year? And the whole thing sort of languished a little bit, and then Mike said, you know, typical of him, "Look, I can get this done." And it is so much better, it came out so much better than I think I had, had maybe expected, because when you put something like that, and I think he put touches into it, that improved it significantly.
James, okay, you hit a blue W.
Oh, there you go. And, and it is, I don't know if you've taken temperatures in there, but maybe you could speak to that.
It's incredible, actually. Emo and I were out there on a number of occasions. The doors that we built were stuck as a good swell level. So there wasn't a problem to build a actual concrete door. And so we go out on Monday, Tuesday, and we were all shocked at how warm it was inside out. And I think we worked on the door, but we'd say, inside, winter. Yeah, so it was great, it was a fun project. Kids have done it. And actually Jasmine was the one that got to the door under the bus. When we started shingling and they started to see how it was coming together, you were the one that said, "Don't let the other person shingle this." I remember just hearing, speaking behind what we were doing, like, like, you know. Emo got out there and helped with that a lot. And like I said, people, I'll say it again, it was a very generous and quick team. They were beautiful without any, you know, takes care of them.
Michael, I wondered if you'd also speak to, just a little bit, to another sort of offering that you created, and that was sort of the home improvement? And I'm not sure whether I have the title right.
That was Dr. Bucky's brainchild, I think, a year and a bit ago. He was in the school on the case, and they had eight students. Around the school did technical support. And he said, "One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight." And Emo was there. And so we done, we patched plaster walls and taught how to patch plaster. Fire central circuits, replaced the stuff door and the equipment. Now the field count for the doors, actually here, to replace the door. I'm not alone building this here. We removed the window from the, what's the name of that building? I don't know what's the name of that building. Shingle over that. I'm gonna do that for extra credit, so I can be on a ladder occasionally. Because it's a second story. Around the school, yeah, just, we've done a lot of general repair, as the course has described. And it's been, it's interesting, I was actually speaking about it the other day. It's, it kind of grows and morphs, it's sort of tricky to put together an entire curriculum for it. But I have Mike Raines who's gonna come in, come in the next semester's session. He's gonna tighten the panel. And it's a cover, it's a white cover, like, the whole sheet, whatnot. There's some plumbing, because if you, you've done stuff with the plumbing. Brian Ryder wired the little office that I built in the shop. You know, commercial wire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. How did you take your class to build this, Liam?
I think it was a full week. We did it on a tour, maybe the last two or three quarters, we kept it. Metal hoop still already, and we stretched the plastic over it. And to finish the, kind of like a baseboard, so it could be a baseboard outside. We pulled the plastic down. And then after that, we did what? We framed the gate boards on it.
She likes that shingling. I hope you have some work at home.
It's a very impressive structure.
Oh, well, thank you. It was fun to do.
What I love about your class too, not only with that structure, but the home improvement piece, is that your students get to do practical things and then get to see the benefits of their work. They're not just being cheerful, not that there's anything wrong with achieving. I know several.
Very recently.
Yes. But I think it's great, because it's practical.
It is.
And it's really getting kids who are interested in going into that business, that competition stuff, as well as getting private, you know, schools and programs. I would imagine, any of these cases, that certainly, that early, you start, you start to feel good when you go by it. And you think, you know, it's hard to tell.
No, I think back to the old areas, Mr. Monk's classroom. And I'll never forget their saying when they were attacking, trying to break the walls. "Mr. Gervin, that's really useful." And I said, "You're right, Mia," and they won't teach you that at all. I read it a lot. Just as Jasmine does.
I think it's great that our kids get some experience. And while Mr. Gervin's here, I'd just like to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you very much.
You don't, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, like. You think your mother's made basket is already on YouTube? Yeah, I think she, I think she's not that savvy.
With the bullying out there, can you please tell, if you're listening, do you have a second? All right, is there a communication?
I think somebody can stand behind. I think it's got a real quick report, so.
Do you want Mike first, or do you wanna?
Sure, Mike can start.
Well, if you three want to join us here, that's probably, that'd be great. I'll just do the overview. So then it saves time, those are like, coming and going. So thank you. My name is Michael Horton. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for STEM. Wear many hats, so I also want to give a little kind of annual bullying update of what the district is doing, kind of an overview and summary. And then each building principal will talk about numbers and statistics at each of their buildings. In addition to all the ways that teachers and administrators handle bullying and conflict every single day, in the hallways and classrooms, cafeterias and playgrounds of each school, is that we've had three presentations this year. The first is back in August, the district orientation, where our attorney Andrea Bell addresses all staff in those pre-service days. And she talks about civil rights and mandatory reporting and bullying. Then during Red Ribbon Week, we have Improv Boston, give a few assemblies at the middle school, and the elementary school about healthy choices and conflict resolution. So they tie in the themes of bullying between students into their skits and presentations. And then we have a much larger, more in-depth formal presentation from Mark. And Mark is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, based out of Bridgewater State University. Dr. Megan McCoy has worked with us in the past. She came and spoke with all staff on Wednesday, December 7th, for a couple hours. It was a half day, so we all met in the auditorium. And she gave a kind of update on bullying in 2016 and 2017. And then just quickly to sum that up, she reminded us of the definition of bullying, that not all conflict is bullying, that it has to be repeated. That's a key part of bullying. She talked about the myths, and she debunked some of the meth, of the myths. She's, has, she's collected data over the last five years, so she reported on some of the research. Part of her doctorate was all on this subject. She reminded us that, you know, it should, it should be more than just tell an adult. Be careful, not every little thing is bullying, but you do need to respond. Her one big hope and dream is that in the moment, everyone would just respond. Say something as simple, if you hear something by anyone, that you would say, "I didn't like that," or "I didn't like what you said." "It offended me." So it's no longer between two students or a few students, but now you're involved, because it also has now violated your own personal civil right. She mentioned about the overuse of the word bullying can damage kids' relationships, especially at a young age, where students just kind of afraid to speak and interact and talk with one another. Or are so offended that they refuse to sit near each, sit near each other or work out their struggles or differences. So that was a kind of a neat span on how to look at it. And she wove that into, how can we actually help kids be more resilient? Not every little thing is bullying, but how do students address conflict? How do they handle situations, difficult relationships, conflicts within their peers? And it starts, starts at a very young age. Of course, she went into technology. She gave a lot of really neat statistics about technology versus play, and how that has changed in as recent as the last three years, that we really need to be conscious of the amount of sleep students are getting. That if they have access to a device, parents need to know that their students are online, that they're using these devices, if they have it in their room. How late are they up at night? And that contributes to sometimes interactions and conflict among students. She talked about gateway behaviors, you know, that we need to address these little things early on. Even some simple things like eye rolling, body language, even littering is a gateway behavior to a bigger problem with our interactions with one another. I will let the principals talk about bullying, starting with the elementary school, and then the middle school and the high school. And then I have a couple more key takeaways to sum up from Dr. McCoy's presentation. So, Kim?
So, I'm pleased to say that we have no instances of bullying. For this current school year, we have no, the bullying policy is on our website. And so it always starts in a place where if we think something is bullying, you complete the incident report form. So, we have no incident report forms, and so we have no bullying. We're not naive, and there are certainly incidents where kids struggle with each other, but it is not the targeted, it is not the repeated. And so we do a lot of conflict resolution in the classroom, on the playground, in our student support center. We have had to, in fact, help parents understand the definition of bullying, because, much like you were just referring to, sometimes we say quickly, "He's a bully," or "She's a bully," and technically, they don't, they don't meet that definition. So the elementary school is at zero.
Middle school's not at zero, but our numbers are not high. We just have a few instances of bullying. Middle school years are difficult, and I think that, you know, we're working as hard as we can to educate kids and help kids navigate the situations that they find themselves in. It's not an unusual spike in bullying this year. It's pretty consistent from year to year. It's usually like, you know, anywhere from zero to three or four instances in any given year. So we're on pace to have that, within that range. I think what's happened is we've done so much bullying education that it's been successful in eliminating the kind of repetition piece that Michael talked about, as being a key to the definition of bullying. And the issues that we see are more, I've talked about this in past years, about mental health issues with students, anxiety issues with students, and then just helping kids figure out how to interact appropriately with each other and with adults. I'm more concerned about disrespectful behavior than I am about bullying behavior amongst our, amongst our students. So, that's where we need to partner with families in the school to consistently be sending a message that we need to treat each other respectfully. And then we can prevent, like, that gateway concept that Michael referred to. But overall, the number of bullying incidents are relatively low.
Do you think, Peter, that the change in the telephone process has cut down on cyberbullying at all? Or the related, the stuff that maybe happens out of school and comes into school? Have you seen any thing that would indicate that?
I'm not sure there's necessarily a direct tie to that, because a lot of the cyberbullying stuff that we've seen in the past kind of happened outside of school. But the cell phone move has been positive. I think we have seen a little bit of a recent spike in, in cell phone use. It still concerns me that as soon as 2:20, that bell rings, kids are reaching for their phones. And in some cases, they're lit up with, you know, snaps that have, that they've missed throughout the day. So I think there is still some undercover bathroom cell phone use that may be going on. So we're trying to combat that, but, but we haven't had cyberbullying, as far as we know, take place. So I think at least it gives them a window of time where that's not taking place because of cell phone.
Thank you.
So I'm glad it's not a conflict report that we do annually with the school committee, because I don't think there's a shortage of conflicts for adolescents in the high school. But in terms of official bullying cases, we were like the elementary school. There were no official cases of bullying at the high school. I think Megan McCoy's presentation on bullying was insightful for the high school, because the topic that we sometimes shy away from is inappropriate use of social media and what children may be sending to one another that then develops into cyberbullying and harassment. So I think that was good for high school staff to be educated or reeducated on that piece. I think, you know, we talked about in the faculty meeting today, that we have to be vigilant with the cell phone piece, because I, like Dr. Cohen, think that students are saying, "No, I don't have my phone." And then when they're taking a trip to the bathroom, they're sending that text or that Snapchat or stuff like that. So it's a never-ending issue in trying to police what we have. But in terms of official bullying at high school, there were no cloud reports in the last second.
So just to sum up a few of the key takeaways from Dr. McCoy's presentation back on December 7th. Respond to gateway behaviors and disrespect. Kids will learn that they don't have to call it bullying to get your attention. And then she listed the Mark helpful strategies that adults do when bullying is reported. They talk to you and are supportive, even when they can't stop the bullying. They check in with you frequently and give you the feeling they're watching out for you. They talk to other teachers, so more people are watching out for you. In terms of technology, just all be aware that as kids grow, what they do online interacts with school more and more. And then the last two, what works for one student won't necessarily work for another. And then expect a journey. It's not a quick fix. Something that, you know, it takes a village, it takes a community to address all the little incidents of disrespect before they grow and fester into bigger problems that might turn into bullying if they're repeated between students.
Thank you very much. Can I open questions?
Would you be able to share that with us, or?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. It's a, she couldn't release the whole PowerPoint, so it was like a PDF file. And it's not easy to send through email, because it's too large. But I'll figure out a way to get a couple of these pictures and I'll get the school committee later tonight or tomorrow. Or I probably, maybe through Google Drive, I could probably send you the link. It's probably a solution. Right, Dr. Cohen?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious, in the presentation, what's the sort of philosophy these days of handling a bullying situation? Years ago, it used to be that you'd get the two students together, just in the same room. Is that still what you do? I'm just kind of, do I sound really old?
First, it's all these head shaking, it's like, that's what we did.
Give them bataca bats and leave them alone.
Leave them in a padded room, and then they figure it out. No, but when my kids were in elementary school, that was, that was what they did. You know, it was like, so I'm just curious, how has that changed?
Curious now, it's kind of victimizing, where the victim, the victim of the world with the bullying. So that's not how it tends to be. So, it's all done separately. You're right, you used to get a trend, and I'm like, oh, let's just get them back together. About that, bullying says whatever they need to say in that moment. And then there's, there's a, you know, the other side of it, where the person that's sitting there, people will be face to face. And often, it's pushing, or it's pushing.
Do any of you ever get contacted by parents, you know, about bullying? Like, if something happened outside of school, I'm not bringing this school in, but can you help me with that? So it's, you know, having those conversations. Because I think it's naive for us to think that there isn't, there isn't bullying going on somewhere in the community somehow. And I, I appreciate the fact that it's not within the guidelines of what bullying comes under, the state, there's a bullying. But that's good to know that parents have you as a resource, because, as I just said, that's something that you might think, if you get two friends together to talk about it, but now, as you're saying, sort of research is showing that that's not the best solution.
We'll have to give a shout out to our school resource officer, Kathy Thompson. She does a great job in interacting with families on things that happen outside of school, whether it's cyberbullying, or whether it's an incident, an event off campus of working with families to help resolve some of those conflicts that are happening.
And guidance counselors and social workers.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
At the elementary school, we use responsive classroom. And so there are certainly different conflict resolutions, solving warning behavior problems. So we follow a multitude of protocols that include really thinking about your own actions in that, and then having a conversation, whether it be with the guidance counselors. I really want to thank them for that, she's what can do so good. But also David Sable gets involved in that. Sometimes Nina Slade or I will be involved in that. We have actually, once we determine separately all those investigations recently, we put two kids back together because it was a complete and utter standing on both of their hands. And so, and that was brought to us by a parent, not students, pretty well. So, I like to be able to say zero. As I said, it's not like working on things on the playground, but we're also trying to build that foundation early, of mitigating early, so that it doesn't become repeated and targeted.
I wonder if there's any warnings about hazing? Because I think that we are all very familiar that at a number of schools, hazing arises, it seems to, they seem to all get stupid when they get on a team. And I was wondering how we're addressing those issues. Probably ask Chris to answer.
Well, I would dish it to Chris, but the MIAA does a really nice job of writing coaches' education and support for athletic directors. And I know Chris does, coaches' meetings at the beginning of each season. And that's one of the topics that they address. A lot of that, I think, came out of camps, where teams would go away and have like, a camp during the summer. And to my knowledge, we don't do much of that anymore.
No, and I mean, that is part of the conversations that we have with our coaches, for the team. And we're everything, they have to watch our company, they're going to be a little, and then, as I said, we really have a team. You know, we are hazing, we're thinking about it, we're thinking about athletics. I mean, everything that we're trying to do, we're trying to promote the guidance, we're trying to work together and something, you know, and, and, you know. Not only bring each other, but putting each other together. But, but, um, everything is, is successful, everything is, and, 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 and.
Along those lines.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
And I'll get this to the committee.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to discussions and votes. Do you have a motion to approve January 3rd, 2017, meeting minutes? Are you expecting to be able to do this?
Aye.
A vote to approve this motion, which would compare to the people here, who have been in the building. And then, how I hope that we can, we're sixty dollars. Six hundred dollars? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve January 3rd, 2017, meeting minutes? All in favor? May I have a motion to approve January 3rd, 2017, executive meeting minutes? All in favor? May I have a motion to approve transfers and invoices? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Just briefly, on the building project, we had a tour at four o'clock today. It was a lot of fun. A lot of things have really been moving very quickly, especially on the second floor. I'm a little bit further ahead there than they are on the first floor. You know, there's paint on the walls, cabinets are going in, whiteboards are up. And it's really moving quickly. It's on schedule. You know, on schedule to, to us means June 30th, because that's what's in the agreement. But they feel that they could be done even sooner. You know, I'd be happy with June 30th giving us two months to move things in. But it's, it's really coming along nicely, and I think the spaces are going to be well received by the students and the community. So, a couple people did make the first basket in the, in the new gym. We have Zona on.
Video.
On video, making that basket, and.
We didn't catch you all, though.
They didn't catch me, and I did make it.
He was the first.
I didn't see it.
And then, if you didn't see it, it didn't happen. And Tom Hanlon, so a few of us, but the gym is something to behold. The gym floor is down, and the walls are painted, and it's.
It's amazing.
But things are moving along quickly and we're on schedule at this point.
Well, since my office was moved down in proximity, I've been impressed that the guys have been out there working in some ugly weather.
Yeah.
And I'm always looking to see that they're tied in and not getting blown off the roof.
Yeah, we had a little problem with the roofing subcontractor following the rules on that. But I think the message was conveyed and followed.
Well, I'm just very impressed with the rate and it's gone up. And the hospital should do as well.
It's been, you know, everybody has, I think, that understanding of the inconveniences, whether it's the beeping of trucks as they back up or, you know, clearing, putting bricks down, you know, the nail gun, all of those things. And but I think when you're, when you get to this point, you can see the light at the end of the tunnel. And it's pretty exciting.
Listen, I have to say how impressed I am with the limited space you had for staging, how you, you know, accomplished so much. It's just incredible. I mean, there was a very tiny space designated for staging. You really had to work and be creative and thank you. Very impressive.
It was a challenge, but we're there. And I know Zona got to see it today and if other board members want to at some point go in, I'll give you the tour. So I think that's been great. And then on the horizon, it was really nice to have Mike Urban here today. I appreciate that request from Pauline. And it's, you know, there are a lot of things that go on in vocational programming that people don't see. And that real, real-life application of things is really terrific. So we're on for FinCom on Thursday. This says the seventeenth on the horizon, but that FinCom will be this Thursday, the nineteenth at four o'clock. That presentation will be pretty much what you heard earlier tonight for the budget hearing.
That's good.
And they will be televising that, so I think our message will get out.
I hope so.
At the next meeting, I think we have the self-evaluation. We'll get that out to you. And the homework discussion will be a little bit longer. And then I think the second quarter budget presentation update, I think Martin is ready for that. I'm not sure yet about snack. I need to talk to Sheila and see if they're prepared to come in and make a presentation or not. But I think with the homework discussion alone and the budget update will be plenty.
For the homework discussion, are we having each school kind of present their homework?
We're actually talking about that tomorrow in administrative team meeting.
Okay.
I think that we'll probably give a brief overview of the policy and regulations. And then each building principal can give a little rundown of what happens in his or her school. And it's a little hard to generalize even to one school because you have, you know, you have different philosophies even within a school. So I think it'll be a good conversation. We don't have, we don't know that the Sparks Bartlett Road update will take place at the next meeting. I haven't had them get back to me, so I run it out.
Okay.
And dress code report.
Yeah, do you want to talk about that? I was actually going to bring that up under subcommittee.
I just wanted to make sure I got on the horizon.
Oh, no, actually, do you want to talk about it tonight? I think it's fine. All right, well, let's talk about it tonight. Subcommittee reports. The dress code committee has been meeting. We've met twice. We've had some good discussion about dress code and uniform discussions. We each had assignments and some of the assignments were to look at other districts, public schools, that have uniforms, to look online, to see different companies that offer uniforms and get pricing. And then to talk to, we're trying to get feedback. We've had, our committee is made up of the three different principals. We have two school committee members. We have school council representatives from each school. And then we have students from school council and I think just general students from CPS and NHS representing. So we've decided after two meetings that the next step would be to have a questionnaire or a survey and then lead to a forum. So if there's any discussion that you want to have about this.
I just have a clarification question because I was at the first meeting, but I missed the second meeting.
The second.
I'm sorry. My question, and we were going to talk about it tomorrow too, is the intent of the survey to have a survey go out by each principal to their constituents? Or one by the district to the district's constituents? And so I'll need some guidance as to how that is to go out.
Sure. I don't think we really clarified that, did we, as a committee?
We kind of did. I thought we said it would go out to each of their constituents so we could gauge where it came back from.
But coming from the school committee?
Yes.
And, okay, coming from the school committee.
From the school committee.
But identifying where you talk.
Right.
And we're still working to, I thought it was going to be same during, but you needed to identify.
Exactly. Your school.
Teacher, parent.
Right.
What level is it?
And which level.
And would that go out to Aspen? Or would it go out, you know, how, what was the discussion on that? Was it?
Well, every avenue.
If it did, maybe it's a term, if it did, it's not a consequence or if Aspen surveyed, that might be next week.
And that's going to.
Like, we're going to. Okay. Is this going out to the students also?
Yes. We're trying to reach everybody. We're trying to get input from everybody.
Is this going out to the students also?
Yes. We're trying to reach everybody. We're trying to get input from everybody. Yeah.
And did you have an opportunity to talk about what questions might make up that survey? Or is that at the next meeting?
No, that's at the next meeting. See, I'm ahead of myself. I really thought that I was going to bring this up at the next meeting, right before, before we met. But I just decided with Zona mentioning it. Okay. All right. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I thought we were going to put it on another meeting, but I wanted, I didn't see it on the horizon. I wanted to make sure it got there.
Do you have any questions?
Not about that. It's just something that's.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that we are in the next phase, which is going to be a survey.
Would the same questionnaire go to the students and to the parents? Or would you want to identify which one belongs to which group?
No, I think it would be the same survey and you would just identify who you are.
Are you guys, like, for next year, like, should we go on next year?
We're just, no, we're just collecting data. We're just trying to get feedback from everyone. We don't have any kind of.
We're just trying to take this idea, concept, and take it all the way and get really good feedback and then make a decision, an informed decision or not. But we want to hear from everyone. We want to know what everyone's feeling, thinking on this issue.
You think we'll get some response?
I think the response will be different between parents and students, I think. It'll be really interesting to see the results.
Generate some good, better conversations.
No, no, we're very open to ideas. Yes. So that's where we're at. Survey and then eventually leading up to a forum.
Great. I'm happy with that.
Yes. Great. All right. Do you have another question? You said unrelated?
Unrelated, but just something I'd like to add for future conversation. And I've had probably more conversations with parents than I wanted to around substance abuse and specifically drinking, drinking. And I think that parents are concerned that there is a fight usage of alcohol amongst our community and particularly our young students. And I feel that it is our responsibility. I've known, we used to have a prom meeting, pre-prom, and I know that parents had to sign something, the students had to sign something. If I'm not correct, maybe I was in violation, I didn't, I didn't sign anything last prom. I didn't know if it was, and that's why I just said I'm in violation. I don't remember hearing, so if we did, I missed that. But I think the work that Jenny did, Jenny Bellmo and Alliance for Substance Abuse, and going back even earlier, the Piers Promoting Ags of Business and Action in the Ways, was really good, solid education for our students. And I feel that we've been remiss in that. And I just would love us to have a conversation and start thinking about, you know, we have senior prom coming up, we have junior prom coming up. It's, we have time to sort of put some structures together, at least to have these conversations with our kids because I feel like I hear from parents, I hear from kids, everybody's drinking. And I know that's probably an overexaggeration, but if kids and parents are feeling that, I think we need to bring back some of those conversations.
I totally agree. That's great. I would like to add that to the agenda, but I would like to ask Dr. Lucky to speak to that because it's a conversation that I had with him recently about pre-prom.
Are there any appropriate peer groups that could come in to talk to the kids? I've always felt like what is very effective was back in the PPAA days, which has been a while. And I'm not saying then because of funk, but is there a peer group that can talk to, talk to students? Because I, well, I felt being involved in a program, it was very effective that high school kids coming into eighth grade, seventh grade to talk and also to their peers in the high school. So I don't know if it's an appropriate. Oh, yes, yes.
Is the new version of the BAA, and they do, they still partner with the grade classes? Do they, do they?
It would be, it would be great, and I'd be happy to sort of, you know, work with the small group on that because I just think it's a very important conversation and I think we've been missing that a little bit with documents.
I think that's a great idea. Tim, do you want to?
Why not invite Phil Pittman?
That's a good conversation piece. Yeah.
I think the police, by an interpretive law, would probably know more than some of us do. And I think it's also, you know, he's represents that aspect of things because kids get a DUI and that follows you around for a long time.
I think the other piece and the, the apparent amount of power is trying to address this is you've got to talk to parents as much or more than you've got to talk to students.
I agree.
Because there are, we have some wonderful parents, of course, but there are a lot of enabling parents out there that are making it very challenging. And I know if Chris were still here, this is something that he would absolutely concur, you know, with you that it's time to stand up and, you know, so education. The problem is that when you have parent meetings like that, you're usually preaching to the choir. You're getting the ones out who are concerned about it and not necessarily.
The ones that need to hear it.
Reaching the ones that need to hear it. You still do it. We still need to do it. And we need to make it a more of a hue and cry throughout the community that this is, this is a community problem.
I agree. I want to say, same with Pauline, students come to me and parents have talked to me. I was doing a senior's hair last year. And she was telling me about a party she went to where the parent was giving the kids wine to drink. Oh, what's, you graduated, have a drink. Everybody was drinking wine. These are kids that aren't 21. And that's not, that person's position to give permission for my child to drink. My child wasn't there, but, for example. So we talk a good game, but this is our community. Are we serious about doing something or are we not? And I think we should, you know, me, I'm old school. I think we should join forces with the police and they should be visiting every graduation party and everything going on and see what's happening. It's going to take something very tragic to happen for people to, you know, we react. We're not proactive here. We react to a situation. And that's something I take very, very seriously. Now, my son was in a car accident. A lot of people know that over two years ago. Thank God he wasn't drinking. There was no alcohol or substance on him. But imagine that happened to someone that's not drinking? Can you just imagine the circumstances if it was the opposite way? I can't even fathom that. But I understand that years ago, there was a tragic car accident with young people. And we've been fortunate and blessed that something like that hasn't happened anymore than it has because we have a lot of substance abuse, a lot of things going on and that we kind of turn a blind ear to because it's not happening to us. But the minute it happens to somebody in our community, it happens to us. We know how we take and pride ourselves on each other and how much we love and try to support each other. But no one wants to be the parent, to the parent that's doing this or allowing this per se. And that's, that's Zona's opinion and Zona's only. I don't speak.
No, I'm going to clap. I think that's a good opinion.
I don't speak for the school committee on that. This is a parent talking. And I just want to put that out there. I am on board for whatever it's going to take. If I have to drive my kid to and from every party she wants to go to, I will. But that's how I feel.
But let's, let's continue to be proactive. Let's not sit back and be reactive. Let's be proactive. Let's start a work group or a task force. And let's bring in other community members and really make this, you know, something that we work, you know, we work to keep our kids safe.
Parents that do have drinking, underage kids are under special liability if one of those kids gets in an accident.
I know.
I mean, that, well, no, it's not on their conscience. They are liable. And.
Logan. Thank you.
And I think if we stay silent, then it's almost confusing as you're accepting the situation.
Exactly.
So thank you for.
So we'll work, we'll work on a work group or a task force. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else to present or bring?
We are in the process of getting potential, another potential dance approved and also.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.